Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, regular meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Milton. If I could ask everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the purpose of tonight's meeting, we're going to flip Items Three and Four on the agenda, so I'm going to, excuse me, Three and Five, and I'm going to ask the Chair of the School Building Committee, Mr. Sean O'Rourke, to join us for our presentation. Welcome.
Sean O'Rourke, 27 Quarry Lane, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, and Chair of the School Building Committee.
Yeah, you might have been there.
Yeah, apologies. I'll repeat that.
Bring it up to your floor.
Yeah, sorry, you know how it is. So, Sean O'Rourke, 27 Quarry Lane, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, Chair of the School Building Committee. With me tonight, too, is my Vice Chair, Mark Loring, and our OPM, Sean Burke. Ms. Milano, online is Shinali Regali and Larry Spang, who are architects, just in case any questions came up. Mr. Chair, I do have a presentation that I'd like to give. Thank you.
That's why you're here.
Appreciate it. And Ms. Milano, if you could just promote me. Yep.
Oh, yes.
All right, so let's get started. So basically, you know, the format of the presentation is a brief introduction for a school building committee for those who are not familiar with us, walk through basically what we've worked for, what we work with the architects and our consultants with called visioning sessions, how those visioning sessions have led into the design, informed the design, and essentially that design has led into a cost estimation, which you all know you've been looking for, and essentially close it out with our schedule. So, School Building Committee is made up of nine members, five at the top are appointed by the Town Moderator, including myself, the bottom left is Mr. Loring and Dr. Miranda from School Committee. Ms. Cohen joined us in June, and Glenn Hoffman are appointees of this board here. So, this is the graph they update each year, which basically shows the, the yellow horizontal line shows the elementary school capacity in 1900. For probably approximately the past eight years, we've been operating one grade level above that capacity, and it's shown throughout the district through a number of presentations I've given previously on space needs. The key thing to note here is, on the bottom, is the size of the kindergartens, and our incoming kindergarten class right now, the incoming class is approximately 369 students. So when you look on that graph, the largest number of kindergartens, 372 in 2019. The concern is with this incoming class, they lead to a large base class that always increases from kindergarten up to first grade. So even though it's going to come in as a big class, it's just going to grow as it propagates through the schools. And the key for that is, we don't have space. So, the current configuration of the district right now consists of four elementary schools, middle school, and the high school with the great configurations that we show here. What our project has promoted is the creation of an upper middle school and redistribution of the grades, specifically at the elementary school level, keeping it kindergarten to fourth. So what that does is, by removing preschool and the fifth grade out of there, we free up space in the elementary schools without the need to redistrict by introducing a new school. The peer school, which is now absorbing all these large classes, is also squished for space. So by removing a grade level there, we address that one. The introduction that we do is here, over on Gile Road, is creating an upper middle school for seventh and eighth graders and a preschool. So, brief timeline, since we kind of met last Fall Town Meeting, we were afforded additional funding, and essentially with that, we built a team of PMA Architecture, who's with us tonight, along with Arrow Street. We executed the contracts, negotiated everything, and got it done by February. Immediately starting that in March, we went through visioning sessions, which I'll touch on in coming slides. Overlapping that visioning, it fed into design, so we didn't, they didn't sequentially hit each other, they overlapped. So we had design going essentially since early April, and then we're here tonight. So, as everyone's aware, as I mentioned, Gile Road is the preferred site that we have. The land swap had passed Town Meeting last year. We identified a parcel, shown here as Parcel Two, and we've used that parcel with the architects right now to basically develop the site. The development that we have there, as I mentioned it at the last Select Board Meeting, is a campus strategy. We reintroduced two separate buildings, a standalone larger building for the upper middle school, and a separate building for preschool. So, additional work that we've done above and beyond that are borings along Gile Road. Part of the feed into the cost estimate, we want to make sure we're working with correct things. So the data that we pulled from the borings allowed us to feed into this cost estimate that you're about to hear. The other thing that we did, too, is take soil analysis for hazmat contamination. There's no hazmat there, which is a good thing, another thing that fed into this cost estimate. One of the other ones that came up early on when we met with the Conservation Commission, there was anticipated wetlands that the conservation agent thought there was along Gile Road. We've worked with BSC Engineering to go out, actually do soil samples and look at it and determine there are no wetlands at this spot. So, it was a unique thing to try to figure out how you determine what a wetland is, who makes that decision. So it was a collaborative effort through us and the Conservation Commission. So, the visioning sessions, essentially what this is, is, you know, assume somebody asks you to build your dream house. You go in, they give you pictures of everything that's there, you work with them and feed into this vision of what you want to see. So what that did is led to a number of meetings, as you see here. They toured the existing schools, we did listening sessions with a number of the district leadership team that you can see there that was made up of the superintendent, principals, director of early childhood education, over 20 teachers, special education, service providers, libraries, IT department, we had everybody there. So there was input from all sides that fed into this, along with our design team. So as you can see, there was a lot of work done basically through April all the way through The other one that paired up with this is taking that visioning and also going out to sites to look at what new schools look like. So what we did is we visited four sites, two middle schools, two preschools. So the first one that we went to was the Chapman Middle School in Waymouth. This one was built in 2022, very large, bigger than what we were doing here, but again, using it to pull out little details that we want to feed into our project. Similarly, we went to Leicester Gates Middle School, very similar, high-tech, lots of space, well-lit, great site. Now, for preschools, we started at the Newton Early Childhood Education Center. This was actually a former elementary school, so this is a renovation. So when you see the cost of that there, the cost is skewed a little bit because they had the existing building, they had the existing site, they just gutted it and rehabbed it. The amazing thing with this one was the amount of space that we had compared to what we have now. And then lastly, probably one of the more beautiful ones we got to visit was the Douglas Gates Preschool. This is kind of similar to what we were doing, is an elementary school with a preschool all under one building. So ours are two separate buildings, but at least it fed into that there. The one thing I would ask you to do is, before that Douglas Gate School, they had to do, it was an MSBA project, they had to do a tour of the schools. This YouTube video, what you see on the bottom there is what they had in those schools before, on the top is kind of what you see after. And it's eerily familiar with the before of kind of what we're experiencing now. So when we look at that, our classrooms right now, you know, we have classrooms in libraries with office partitions, inadequate acoustical separation, you know, compared to theirs, properly sized, acoustically separated, lots of tech. Music classrooms, as you know, we have music classrooms on stages. They have music classrooms with dedicated desks, you know, equipment, and again, technology. Library, you know, which is a big one. The bottom that you see here is Colley-Cott Cunningham Library. These are basically cannibalized spaces, and they're used for storage, everything else, everything gets thrown in there, it's like a potpourri. The Douglas Gate School that you see at the top is dedicated as a library, it's dedicated for reading, it's quiet. So, finally, this is one that kind of goes ignored sometimes, is teachers' professional spaces. Last year, Colley-Cott Cunningham, they had their teachers on the stage behind a curtain, and as you see from Newton, you know, they have dedicated space, cabinet work, proper storage, everything for them, you know, as a professional, that's kind of what I would be expecting for us. So all these visioning site visits, they fit into what we're going to look into now for design. One thing we did through the design, as I mentioned, we had a visioning session, as I'm sure if someone asked you to design your house, your house would be very large and very expensive, right? So when we did the visioning session, the overall square footage that we came up with was 202,000 square feet. As we looked at that, for the number of students we had enrolled, we understood it was way too big, just by, you know, density of the students. So we worked with the district leadership team, right-sized the spaces by reducing some of the classroom overall square footage, and then went through our first revision there. The one thing to note on that, too, is that visioning session, they visioned preschool to be full-day preschool. Right now, we only have one full-day preschool, Tucker, everything else is half-days, so this, that was one of the things that we cut back on. Further, we refined it more and basically brought it down to what you're going to see tonight at 152,000 square feet. Some of the key things there, we reduced it from eight teams to seven teams, which is currently how the middle school operates, but it gives them more space. The key thing we wanted to do is, as we were drawing this back, we wanted to make sure we didn't pull it back too much. So what we did is look at other schools, the average square foot per student, to look at that. So when we took these examples of schools that were built at 186 square feet per student, we're at 191. So, you know, we didn't cut back too far, and we're actually above where other schools are operating. So, diving into the middle school, looking at that, what you see on the left is an exploded view of the school. It's four stories, obviously the largest is at the first floor, and then the upper three floors are smaller, and we'll walk through each one. So, on the first floor, it's roughly 58, 59,000 square feet, consists of a gymnasium, auditorium, the administration, exploratory classroom, STEM tech, and then the cafeteria. The second floor, and these start to get a little repetitive, are 22,000, 23,000 square feet. The media room or the library is on that second floor, and then we started introducing the teams, two teams of the seventh grade, along with special education. The other one that we do here is we, again, mix in more teams, and we introduce our world languages. The world languages were, are special because we had dedicated space for them that we wasn't planning on if it was an MSBA project. And then finally, the top floor is the eighth grade. So, one of the things, when we talk about teams, a team is made up of three regular-sized classrooms and a science lab. So as we talk about these teams, they're clusters of classrooms that they can, they occupy. So overall, for the middle school, it's 127,000 square feet, approximately seven teams, an auditorium. So originally, when we had our space that we did previously with DRA Architecture, they didn't have an auditorium, they didn't go to this level of detail. So part of the feedback that we've got from here is the existing peers has an auditorium, and it would be dysfunctional if we had kids at a younger grade going up to the school not having that. So, the preschool's a lot easier, a couple slides, because it's only two floors. So, two floors, the first floor has a couple classrooms, and all the special, and a larger portion of the special ed, along with a big room for playing, the administrative space and the classrooms. So we overall have nine classrooms in there. Similarly, summary, 25,000 square feet, nine classrooms, and, you know, what I discussed about administration and special ed. So, as we mentioned, all this fed into our feasibility study. We took this feasibility study, it's 161 pages of narratives and drawings. We provided this over to our cost estimator last week, and he developed kind of a total construction cost. Along with that construction cost, we'll add a percentage, 30% per OPM, for soft costs, for their designer fees and FFNA. This is a graph that MSBA publishes, it's a live graph as they update their data. So what you see here on the trend line is actual bid costs that they've got back from MSBA for average cost of new construction. As you can see, it consistently goes up. Now, the data to the right, they don't have the trend line there because they have not received bids back, but if you extrapolate along there, you can see the line actually increases dramatically over the past two years. So as we look at those, the assumed trend line, when you look at that data, is steep. Our cost estimator has come in basically exactly as we expected for the start of our construction. What he does is he goes to the midpoint of construction for escalation. Our square footage cost that he's estimating at this point right now is $877 per square So what does that mean in the program? So the construction cost that we're looking at right now is roughly $133 million. The breakdown of that, or round number summary, the initial site work is 2.3 million, the building and site work for the remainder would be about 95 million, 14 million in contingency. So, the idea contingency, I know there's concern that people don't think we're far enough along, part of when your designs, at this point, you carry a higher contingency. As you increase the design and find things, you reduce your contingency, so they play off of each other. The escalation that's built in there right now, highlighted for everyone just to talk, is $5 million to that midpoint. And then the other ones for general condition, bonds, and we'll provide all this to you to kind of look through, but that's the breakdown. Now, when we take that cost estimation and we put in that 30%, the overall project cost comes out to 173 million. I was waiting for a drum roll from the Chair.
I'm waiting for someone to chest pain and collapse in the floor myself. But I heard it earlier today, so I'm already, I've already swallowed that golf ball.
That's fine. So, you know, for us, you know, the timeline that I presented before, you know, we've been working internally as a committee over five years on this project, developing the scope, trying to grease the skids so that when we brought architects and OPMs on, they would have a head start for where we needed to go. They came on, we had a site, we had a program, right? So we've asked them, they got a good head start starting on this. So over the, since essentially the beginning, beginning of March, we've been doing a lot of work, and, you know, it's come to this conclusion right now that we're at this point where we have a number. It's a ceiling, as far as I'm concerned, I agree with you, it's, you know, it's higher than we thought. But the, you know, what we're looking for for this is to let people vote on it. If the, if the concern is that it's too high, it will get voted down. But if it, if it doesn't, then we have funding for a school. Part of the good thing with this number that we can do now is we can work with the Town Administrator, Finance Department, figure out what the tax impacts would be on these, and, you know, we know you've been eager to hear these, and that's why we've been working so hard over the past couple of weeks. Ideally with this, you know, as, you know, we've enunciated since April 6, 2022, we were looking for 2024, 2025 debt exclusion. And, you know, for me, we have been on target with this, we're on schedule for this, and, you know, that's, that's why, for us, this is very important to us. So I think with that, you know, the three questions that always come out since I've started this four, five years ago is, where's, what are we building? We're building a middle school, we got the program. Where is it going? Gile Road. You know, the House and the Senate have both engrossed the bills for the land swap, it's scheduled for roll-call votes, you know, my anticipation is it will be done by the end of the month. And then finally, how much will it cost? And, you know, we're here tonight to kind of lay that out there for discussion.
I picked a high number. Chair and I, we met eight weeks ago, I picked a pretty high number, I thought Ben would, and this has suppressed that by significant now already, so it's...
If, if I could touch one, one thing too, Mr. Chair. So the number that we have there is not reflective of rebates that we get from Mass Save and geothermal rebate, so there's probably seven to eight million dollars that we'll get back in rebate, so the 173 there is most likely 165, but we have to carry that number first for financial, and then as we get those rebates, it basically pays the debt down.
You make a note of that? Because that's something I want to talk about later on. Thank you. Questions or comments before I... The silence is deafening here. No, thank you, I think we're good, I think we'll, I was, for me, most of, 99% of what you've presented tonight, we've been pretty familiar with. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
If I do, if I, if I may, Mr. O'Rourke, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Loring, thank you, everybody that's served on this committee for so many years. In the earlier slide that you put up, this was a noted problem in 2008, and it's only gotten worse since then. And so, and I know that this committee's been working for over five years. We've, you've worked without, often times, thanks, without pay, and, and really, you know, your service to this town is so deeply appreciated, so I want to leave with that. Is there anything in the numbers that you've seen, and maybe Mr. Loring might have a little more insight on this, too, that would make you think that there's going to be a cliff for enrollment in the Milton Public Schools, where suddenly we're going to, you know, drop, you know, down below that threshold that we've been over since, almost for 20 years now?
So, I'll do my best to answer, you can jump in after, but, you know, since I started on the committee, I've been studying the data for enrollment. If you're going to see that reduction happen, it's going to happen at the kindergarten level, because again, once the kids get into the elementary school level, they don't get out, if anything, they grow as they progress through. So with the incoming class that we have at 369, maybe bigger, as, you know, you get last-minute parents kind of jumping in, I don't, I don't foresee a reduction in that, if anything, it'd be more of, back to an increase like we saw, our peak was in 2019.
Thank you. So, just a quick question, probably more for Dr. Barlow, the preschool they pay, is there any, is there any, is preschool free here, completely free?
The preschool is mixed, so some, some families pay it, some families don't.
I'll leave that for another, I'll leave that for another meeting. Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
If we don't build this new school, what happens? How are we going to start mitigating this problem? Because we can't continue to have kids learning in these conditions, they're terrible.
Correct. So, right now, and Mark can touch on this one, the Facilities Advisory Subcommittee of the School Committee, right, not School Building Committee, a separate committee, is looking at renovating the fourth floor of the Cunningham Library, Cunningham School, and my understanding, it'll be two classrooms into the library for anticipation. Basically, something to create additional space right now, that's not going to be enough. What that's going to lead to later on is these kind of small fixes that we're going to do for millions of dollars each time. At some point, we're going to have to go to modular classrooms, trailers, right? And the spaces for those are, most of the time when they do these for schools, end up on the playgrounds. So, you know, my anticipation, we haven't discussed it yet with the district or anything like that, we've talked about it on multiple meetings and things like that, but my concern is, if this project is delayed further, you know, one of the things is, the cost will increase, and then we're going to spend additional money on these kind of temporary fixes, they'll be part of it, and most likely it will be trailers.
Thank you. I'm just going to conclude by saying thank you again. I also want to say, give a genuine apology. When you hear things like this, and you make, yes, I was not surprised by Mr. O'Rourke's answer, you get passionate about what's happening to the children in this town. And at our last meeting, my emotions were a little high because of what's happening to our kids. And for that, I apologize, I apologize particularly to Mr. Cohen and to Ms. Musto for language that I might have used that was over the top, and I'm going to endeavor to, to keep that in check going forward. But it's suffice to say, I think there are many people in this town that are very, very frustrated by this, and I owe it to them to not be frustrated in these discussions. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the indulgence.
Sure, okay. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Barlow.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Mr. O'Rourke, first, thank you for all that you've given for the community for the last five years. I can only imagine the toll it's taken on your personal life and the hours that you've given, so thank you for that. The number that you presented tonight, the 133.5 million, is there any possibility that that number would go down?
Potentially.
Okay.
So, you know, essentially, if we, if we were to, and this is my understanding, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, if we're aiming for a November ballot, as we mentioned on our schedule, the ballot question would need to get entered. The ballot question doesn't have a dollar value associated with it, right? The dollar value gets enunciated at Town Meeting through a warrant article.
Correct.
Right? So between the time now to the time we have to issue that warrant article and have the text for that to go to print, is essentially time that we could refine that number and bring it down. As I said, this, this for me seems like a ceiling. The other part of this that happens, too, is, you know, we've been operating up to this point with, you know, a figured-out budget. We haven't had, we haven't had funding to have an independent cost estimator provide this, and what it does is provide kind of a financial boundary to us, you know, guardrails for the design. So, you know, part of it is, you know, having that as we progress design is a good thing. This is kind of how large capital projects work, it comes up through a schematic design, you build that out to create a budget, you create a contingency in there, and then as designers or professionals, you work towards that budget that's there. I know tonight, with that high of a budget, it's probably easy to say that, but, you know, the reality is, construction costs have skyrocketed, they are extremely high. The more we wait on this, the higher they're going, and as I mentioned to Mr. Zoll, the need's still there and getting worse, so...
Right, thank you so much. Mr. Chair, I have one more question, and it's, it's for you. At our last meeting of the Select Board, you said that we would be taking a vote on this this evening. I noticed on our agenda, it does not say discussion approval, so it's only a discussion, so I'd like to know what your plan is for the approval, because you had promised us at the last meeting that we would be doing that today.
So I made that with the thought that I was going to have a number before tonight, and when we set the agenda on Friday, we still didn't have a number. And I received the number just this morning at 10 o'clock, so there was no sense putting, and to be honest, this is unprecedented. Let me just finish, let me finish, you asked me a question, let me just finish. The second thing is that Item Six, no, Not Item Six, Item Four also came into play, which I did not expect, which is, when we get to that, is going to impact the operational override that hasn't even been mentioned in here. That is very much on our radar screen, and if, not to get into it, if anything, it probably is going to exacerbate the reality that we're going to need an operational in the spring versus being able to, this was talked about before, and as Mr. Milan was worked on, hopefully trying to push that off here so that we only had to deal with this. So that's why, and to be honest with you, I did not expect it to be larger than what I had been saying publicly.
So, Mr. Chair...
I don't know, I don't know what I was hinting for.
Again, I understand what you're saying, except I am, I'm a little, just, I'm disappointed because at the last meeting, and Mr. Chair, I just want to say this, and I'm not saying this in any other way, except you publicly told us that we would take a vote this evening. I understand that they were late getting us the information, so my question to you is, when are we going to take a vote on this?
I don't know.
So, the last meeting where you specifically said twice that we would take this vote...
I've answered it.
You do not feel like that we should be doing that, and you don't know, and you don't know when we're going to do it next, is what you're saying.
I don't think in the history of this town, any board, any Select Board has been presented with as monumental a number as we've just received.
Absolutely, we have, the fire department, when we did all three fire stations, they absolutely, nope, they, they came to us and asked us for three fire stations, it was this, it was a larger amount of money than what we're currently asking for. And so, what I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Chair, is whether or not...
I don't know.
Well, I would, I'd hope that the public now knows that, that the Chair has said that we would vote this evening, and now has no plan for us to vote in the future. has said that we would vote this evening and now has no plan for us to vote in the future.
Mr. Chair, I didn't.
I didn't say that either.
I think when we, when we met last also, there was, because, and Mr. Milano, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we have an August 7 deadline to get.
I know that.
So our next regularly scheduled Select Board meeting is August 12.
So it's going to have to be a special meeting.
So would, will we have a special meeting?
I think we're going to have to decide one way or another.
I think we should decide now because if we don't, I'd like to make a motion.
It's not only Jennifer tonight, so I'm not going, I'm, so the other, the other thing that the members need to know, to place us on the agenda requires a majority of four.
I have an aware of that. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion then, to put a ballot question on the November election ballot to authorize a debt exclusion for the purposes of designing and constructing and equipping. Excuse me, I'm still making the motion. I'd like to make a motion to put a ballot question on the November election ballot to authorize a debt exclusion for the purposes of designing and constructing and equipping a new middle school and pre-K and authorize town council to draft language accordingly.
I'll second.
All those, I, I would, you're out of, it's not up for this vote tonight.
I can make this motion for as far as part of this agenda item.
It's not up for approval.
Right, but he can make a motion about it.
I can make the motion to put this on the ballot, which I've done.
I believe your motion's out of order, but for the purpose of making it tonight, I'm going to vote no. Because as I said, you bring up a good word, emotion, you bring up the word passion. This is even bigger than, than I could have imagined. Our top account in the city, we have no clue what the debt is going to be, what, we have no idea at all.
We do actually have some idea. We've gotten, we all received a presentation from Mr. Fundling about, with an estimation. And admittedly, his number was a little bit on the low side. But we've, we've received some information in terms of what our current debt exclusion is, what our future, future debt exclusion is. So it's not quite true that we would say we don't have any idea what the impact this would be. And I'm sorry for interrupting.
So, motion remains seconded. I think it's out of order, but if you want to vote on it for tonight, I'm fine. I'm going to vote no because I cannot, getting a number like this tonight, decide just like that. This is the biggest, and it's not even close to the fire station. I wish that this were as simple as having the Hurley Amendment to address this. It is not. And one question, Mr. O'Rourke, and I just want to ask you, of the four schools that you made reference to.
Yes, sir.
How many of them got MSBA money assistance? I think I probably already know the answer, but.
No, I believe it's three out of the four. I, I would, I would, I would defer to the architects, they may know specifically. The only one I think they didn't was the Newton one that was a renovation.
A renovation. But you would agree with me that we are in uncharted waters here, building a school of this magnitude of this cost on our own.
Brighton High School was built for $200 million and was completely funded by the town. I'm sorry, Brookline, I believe. So, I mean, it's not, it's not uncharted water.
Brighton High School's in the city of Boston.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I meant Brookline.
Brookline. But, but there are, so one, one of the things, so i- is, is the boards aware? We've gone down parallel paths for financing. We've gone with MSBA, and we've also gone looking at, you know, doing it on our own. Obviously, my preference is to do it on our own because we have such a head start that we could make the construction schedule much smaller. As I've said multiple times, if we continue down the path that we're going, like I said at one, one meeting, if we get all green lights, we go, we're open in 2027, right? If we get blinking yellow lights, red lights, or anything like that, we're delayed. And that delay is, with that high of a number, and you start applying escalation, inflation costs to it, it, it starts getting staggering when you start talking about that, 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 that number in regards to just delaying it. That's, that's one of my concerns. There is, there are districts out there now, I believe Concord and some others, I can forward them to you, that have gone it on their own mainly for that exact reason, to do it quicker and to kind of save the money on, on the construction costs that way. The amount that we would realize through reimbursement through MSBA would get gobbled up by that escalation very quickly over a 70-year timeline. Like the MSBA's, we're, we're going to hit reset, go back, start their program at module one and progress to kind of where we are now at module two or three. And all that delay that we'd encounter there would basically just create a lot of, a lot of escalation associated with it.
So, Mr. Chair, I will, I was just going to withdraw my.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I will, if, if we can have a meeting.
I'll definitely schedule a meeting. I think we have the board, but to me, this two, this, as I say, this is well beyond, and the chair was, and Dr. Barlow's, they've sat and listened to me, and if you remember, many weeks ago, I walked out, I said, I'm picking 150. And you, and you, and you, and then they were at like 120. So I'm going to pick 150. And now we're at 170.
No, we're at 133.
We're at 173 million total. This is 175 million. There's a $170 million debt exclusion already.
Yeah.
Where did I get 133.5 from?
That was just the construction cost minus the 30.
Thank you so much.
And I'm not, look, the one thing, you know, people talk about transparency. This is, you know this, you've heard me say this, Chair Carroll knows, Assistant Superintendent Pavelcheck knows, like, I've been in this, I've, I, I know the cost, I understand. But you got to give us a little bit of time to at least look at this and look at numbers and start to, and I, I, I understand what Mr. Fundling, but Mr. Fundling doesn't work for the town. Amy Dexter is our accountant, and I want to see what she, I want to hear what our, our bonding people. This is more than any, we're presented to anybody. And I've said this before, and I, and don't any of the parents, anyone, this is not a yes or a no. This office represents every single person. And especially those in this who've been in elected office before, know that there are many in this town that this will be extremely, this will be difficult for many of you. This is going to impact taxes significantly. Not to mention, we're about to get into a discussion about a $5 million operational override, which is, we have to have. Chair Carroll says, when I called, I said, we have to be in lockstep. We have, we have to have that.
So, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
That's fine, that's fine. If you're, if you're willing to commit that we'll have a meeting either on, at some point prior to, when would the latest date be for the 7th?
No, we're not going to wait till the 7th. We'll schedule.
Next week, maybe?
You promise? I mean, you promised before, that's why I'm asking.
Listen, I gave a legitimate answer. And is, I was not going to schedule a vote without a number. And to be honest with you, until 10 o'clock this morning, we didn't have a number. And, and we did not, I was surprised. I thank Mr. O'Rourke for getting it to us because he didn't expect to have it until next week. And to, as he knew, I said, as soon as we get it, we'll schedule it then.
Perfect.
Okay. Well, so, so I, I accept that. I will withdraw my motion with the understanding that the need is not going away, the cost is not going down. The kids need this to happen. And so I look forward to putting that same motion forward in a week's time. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I withdraw the motion.
Did you copy that one? Okay. Are we good? Don't miss Musto. I apologize. You've been off and quiet tonight.
Hi, Ms. O'Rourke. Thank you for the presentation. So the Chapman Middle School, for instance, I looked it up online quickly tonight. Looks like they got, is it 57 million from MSBA on a $163 million project? So they got a significant amount of money for that project. I'm wondering with the pricing that you're talking about per square foot, is that the finished with everything in it? Or is that just the construction cost? And with that, did you shop that number to a couple of construction firms that do a lot of this stuff to see? Is that really in, in line with, with what it would cost, you know, some of the bigger firms that do this kind of construction? Is that a realistic number? So that would be important. And with the new building, how many teachers do anticipate for, I need some numbers on how many teachers you anticipate? Staff, custodians, operating those buildings? Do we have costs for the new, for a new building for that as well as for the preschool? How many students in each one? And how much, how many students could it accommodate? Because I know you're building for a certain amount. What are the class sizes? So I think these are all really important questions that we should know about. And of course, we need to know what the final cost would be per 100,000 per person. You know, I think I talked about that before. Because we need to know what the impact is for residents on a proposal like this. And I guess I will finally, finally, I will say that, as Chair Wells said, you know, we're looking at an operational override too. And that includes, of course, some money for the school, which is important because if you have a building and you don't have staff, what good is having a building? So I think we need to understand what that is first for Mr. Milano and, and Amy Dexter, what that really, those numbers mean. Because if we're asking people for overrides or debt exclusion, whatever kind of override it is, we need to understand what the numbers are. And we still have, you know, fire stations that are, that are, yes, it's the Hurley Amendment, but we have ones that are coming up. We have a lot of things going on. So we need to understand a bigger, fuller picture. Thank you.
Okay.
Question two. Oh, go ahead, you want to answer? I'm sorry.
Yeah, there were questions. I thought you wanted me to respond to them.
Sure. If you have any of the answers, that's great.
Do, do my best to round out as best I can. So the MSBA numbers that you're quoting for Waymouth that are there, every MSBA number that they, that they have there is percentage of reimbursement is, is based on socioeconomic factors. So Waymouth compared to Milton is different. So if you're looking at straight percentages between the two of them, you, you have to look at what Milton would get for a percentage. I can find that out and relay it to you. The other part that plays in there is that percentage that's advertised to them gets diluted over the project. So as we introduce additional things, partly there, for example, I mentioned the world languages spaces, they wouldn't reimburse us for that. So that percentage of reimbursement actually goes down. So that's more cost that we'd have to carry as a town. Your question on cost estimate, if we're run it by other construction firms or anything like that, we haven't. The cost estimator we're using right now, Peter Bradley from PMC Consulting, is the cost estimator that does schools throughout, throughout the district. Through the two architecture teams that we interviewed for this project, he was on both teams because he is the guy that does these cost estimates at this point. A typical large construction firm really wouldn't touch this because they don't have the finite details on there. For, for example, when they, when they would bid a job. So looking at this and using what Peter's familiarity with it, they wouldn't have. And then finally, the teachers and staff that you're talking about, keep in mind, the kids are already here. We're relocating these kids to a larger school. The teachers associated with the 7th grade would relocate over there. The teachers associated with the 8th grade would relocate over there. Now, a gym teacher that's teaching at the Pierce right now through, for three grade levels? Yes, you'd have to hire a new gym teacher. MSBA produces a, a template that you have to fill out, and we're following MSBA guidelines, that will fill out, that basically gives that analysis there of what the school is going to need for staffing, what the cost of that's going to be. And then we're going to work with the district on there to basically develop. What if those staffing already exist so we can take them out of the equation? And that's part of the like next phase of this project that we're going through there. Because obviously, there'll be an impact operationally for it.
Just a follow-up. So, but that, because I've met with Dr., that number is going to have to roll into an annual budget or an operational override if it, if it was that great, correct?
Correct.
It's not part of this, it's not part of your.
Correct. Yes. So i- if, if we're on track for 2027 and we're aligning this with that override, yes. But if this gets delayed and we push it out much further, I, I, that's where I would defer for, you know, the finance groups to kind of look at that.
Thank you. So my follow-up would be, so things like, you know, custodians and, you know, principals and things like that, there are numbers for that too, but that would all have to be.
Correct.
Put in.
Yeah.
Not for the building project, but.
Yeah.
For the operational.
Yeah. And the middle school, you know, i- if there has to be a second principal for that, obviously, that's similar, like the analogy I use for the gym teacher. The preschool component though, keep in mind, we're moving the entire preschool from where they are in the district here, the preschool coordinator, all the administration associated with that. So all those, it's not like we're building new preschool and hiring all new teachers. They all already exist in the district.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Zoll.
Just a, you know, this is more of a comment than a, than a question, so please forgive me because I hate it when people do that. But it really is not the job of this board to approve or not approve this new school. It's the job of this board to let the town make the decision about whether we should have this new school or not. And, and to the extent that we have seen people turning out, the interest in this, I, I feel it would be vastly irresponsible for us not to listen to our citizens and to make sure that we are giving them the choice to make their voices heard on the day that we know that most citizens go to vote. So for that reason, you know, we, we, I, I actually did have a question. I was like, I knew I had a question to set that up. So, Mr. O'Rourke, assuming that this board does the right thing by allowing the citizens to vote on this in November, will the School Building Committee be available to do public information sessions to any citizens in Milton who have questions about this? Could they come to you or to the board and ask the, the questions about the classrooms, the costs, the, the staffing, the details? Could you commit to being available to do something like that?
Definitely. So similar to what we did with the land swap, there are a number of public information sessions, one-on-ones, you know, whether it's a Zoom meeting, live meeting in a large audience like this, we will do that. One of my last slides, when I was looking at timeline on there, the last months between now and November, I listed as engagement, and that's the, that's our intent. So, you know, we made a lot of progress, we have a number, we have a design, we have graphics we can share with everybody to answer questions. We're going to further refine these in, up, you know, going into November. And having those, we want feedback from the town. We want input on additional things that are there.
Thank you. Because I think an informed citizenry is, you know, is best. And I, I think that if we give them the opportunity to make a decision, and we give them the information that they need to make the decision, then we need to trust the decision of the citizens. Thank you.
All good? We're well beyond the 20 that you told me.
That was, that was for the slide.
Probably on the Mr. Chair.
I got more if you want.
No, thank you, we're good, we're good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to public comments. And I will start with, if each person would just come up, state their name, and, I have to, I have to set the, hold on, I have to, I haven't done this for a few weeks. So we'll allow a total of 21 minutes. Mr. Milano will keep the time on the total timed a lot. Each speaker, I'll ask if you would keep your comments to three minutes. I will allow you to know when there's 30 seconds left. And I just ask everyone to, I know this is a very important issue for our town, just, let's just respect everyone's, everyone, the one commonality, I say it very often, and I'll repeat it again tonight. No matter what you think on any issue, the one commonality amongst all of us here is 026 is ours of code, and this is where we live. So I will begin with Mr. Curran. Good evening.
Good, good evening. Joe Curran, Grafton Ave. Spitting venom and dividing our town is not helpful. Leadership and their act, and their actions speak louder than any words. As a leader, you need to understand a win-at-all-cost attitude carries heavy price tags. And that's why so many people here tonight to show that we are watching what this board does next. I support the schools. I understand the town has space issues now. My school, friends and I were victims of the 1979, 1980 budget cuts. Where Cunningham Junior High School closed, we attended three different schools in three years because of the shifting space needs of the school. I have voted in every, every override in this town since 1986, and I have always voted yes for the schools. Dissatisf- dissat- dissatisfaction is a boiling point. I don't understand why our certified detailed total contr- total construction cost budget hasn't been presented to the School Building Committee. As you know, the residents have asked the Select Board to do their job and place the debt exclusion on the November ballot. But there hasn't been as much conversation directed at the Select Board, or, I'm sorry, the School Building Board with the same level of urgency as requested, as requested of this committee. As of today, we've, I guess, just seen the numbers. And again, I wrote this before the numbers were presented. But the School Building Committee had an opportunity to meet yesterday and talk about this, and didn't. The School Building Committee doesn't have any, any agenda items set for the month of August at all for us to see this detailed budget, the certified budget, the total construction project budget, which, yeah, the total project cost, which is, which is important. I saw some confusion here tonight about what is the difference between a construction budget and a total, a total, a project, a total project budget and a construction budget. At a minimum, as was discussed, it's 30% more for the total, the total construction cost. And I think that it's important that this board understands that. Construction costs typically refer to expenses directly related to the physical building and the structure. And total project costs are the, the project, project costs that encompass all expenses related to the completion and delivery of the building project. I was also surprised to learn that there's going to be a $500,000 item on tonight's agenda to vote for the schools. And I understand that there's going to be some financial accounting that has to be taken from ARPA money.
30 seconds, Mr. Curran.
From ARPA money. Highly unusual. This board certified. This board certified the budgets for all the other departments, including the school, several weeks ago. Now we're learning the schools weren't able to get their budget in. And now we're doing some fancy accounting methods to account for that $500,000 shortfall that's come before this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fall.
My name is Greg Fall. I have lived at 172 Granite Ave for about 37 years. With my wife Joan, we have two daughters who graduated from Milton Public Schools in 2008. I'm here tonight to advocate for the town's students and the taxpayers. And no matter when you decide to put the debt exclusion for the new schools on the ballot, please look at some of the short-term solutions to support the students and staff in the present. I understand that it's a dire situation of inadequate space that has been talked about for the last five years. And given that fact that the new buildings are a few years away anyway, what's going to be done to mitigate the overcrowding issue right now? I know they're working on the Cunningham buildout, the fourth floor buildout, but questions of the modular classrooms being built in the interim to help alleviate the overcrowding. The students and staff deserve a solution for the present as well as the future. And Milton is the first town that I'm aware of that's asking its citizens to fully fund new schools without any state funding. As you do your due diligence in deciding when the debt exclusion should go on the ballot, I ask you to make sure the ants, to answer the, some of the questions that will impact each taxpayer in Milton. Many of us have fixed incomes and tight budgets and need to have your best estimate of the cost we can expect. There's still many unanswered questions now. One of my first questions was on the total number, which we got tonight for the 173 million, and I'll just, that's wow. But in the, what's going to be the yearly cost of running that schools? That's going to be added on. The yearly maintenance costs, the staffing and benefits cost, even though some or most staff will be moving with the schools, there are additional costs for additional staff that have to, have to be hired for that. Percentage of yearly salary increase in benefits that, that tags on to? What interest rates we paying on the loans the town's going to pay, take out? Will this result in additional overrides of operational budgets in the future? And also, given that the school committee last week disclosed an unexpected $500, $500,000 shortfall, how can we be assured after adding two additional school buildings that there won't be similar costly surprises?
30 seconds, Mr. Fall.
I urge you all to consider these questions and more as you think about when will be the best, what will be the best interest for all the citizens of Milton to vote on a well-crafted ballot question? Also, I ask that whatever town board is responsible for communication about this project, add a frequently asked question page on their website so voters will have an easy and accurate reference for common questions regarding this project moving forward. I thank you for your time and your consideration and all the hard work. I know this is a difficult task for everyone involved, the selectmen and all the boards, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lazio.
Good evening, members of the select board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Thank you also for having a thoughtful conversation. It benefits everyone when we have a difference of viewpoints. I think that gets us much farther as a community. Just want to, a couple of quick things. First, I want to talk about the citizens access. Sorry, Warren Lazio, 160 Alvin Avenue. Thank you. I'd like to talk just for a minute about the increasing the access of information for the citizens of Milton. I think we can do this in two simple and free ways. The first is, we have a wealth of information on YouTube from all of the videos produced by Milton Public Access. There's many people in this room and many people out there watching and listening that are very keen on watching those videos and staying up to date on what's happening in the town. If the select board would kindly provide the copy of their agenda to the Milton Public Access, they could put timestamps on the videos so that people could quickly get through the information, and I think that would have a huge benefit overall. The second thing is that I'd like to know, I'd like to ask the select board to also talk with the committees about submitting minutes on a regular basis. For instance, when I was on the master plan implementation committee, we were reviewing the bicycle master plan, and when I went to, went to the town website to find the minutes for the bicycle committee, there were none. We had no information whatsoever about how much progress, progress and effort they'd put into their work, which had then been submitted to us on the master plan. So I think this, I asked the select board to request that all committees submit minutes, especially ones that they have, meetings in which they have voted, and minutes for all meetings should be required. As appointed representatives of town business, I believe residents deserve to know how committees are progressing with their assignments and how to utilize, and how they are utilizing their assigned authority. So in both of these simple ways, I think we can increase the transparency for the Milton citizens. And then, just quickly, I just, the $173 million number that we just got, right? I don't know how much we went over on the fire stations off the top of my head, but it seems to me that we typically go over budget. It's just the nature of, of the business, right? So let's say that we get, it costs around $200 million, right? And tonight, if we're going to talk about a $5 million debt exclusion, which would cost roughly $550 per, per.
Thousand.
Well, so, yeah, that's cool. As a, as a, as a proxy, let's say, how many households there are? There are 8,901 parcels of land in, in Milton, right? So if you divide that, that amount up, the 50, the 55, sorry, excuse me, I'm getting thrown up. The $5 million by those number of parcels, it's about $500 per parcel, right? So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Haggerty.
My name's Megan Haggerty. I live at 7 Willoughby Road. Is this on? Okay.
It's on. You're on.
Thank you. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2. I'm also the mother of two Milton Public School students, one who's entering the Tucker and a seventh grader at Pierce. In my day job, I'm the chief operating officer at the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Tonight, I just want to encourage you to.
Do you have any money?
I'm not talking about that. Tonight, I just want to encourage you to continue to consider placing the debt exclusion override on the November ballot. Any further delay comes at a cost to the Milton taxpayers due to the construction climate, you know, for vertical construction and roads and bridges. The cost escalation is, it's not going anywhere. Good work has been done on the part of this team at all levels of the project, from public process, project management and design. But most importantly, we need to act now for our kids. Each year, the classrooms are further constrained due to the rising enrollment and the static facilities. Those of us who volunteer in the PTOs hear from our principals about how the facilities are being constrained. And the MPS staff do an incredible job of navigating this situation, but it's only going to last for so long. My family's experience in the Milton Public Schools began in 2016 when my oldest did not receive a Boston Public Schools preschool assignment. If anybody has ever gone through that experience with BPS, you know that not getting that pre-K assignment means you're not getting a quality school. And this was devastating for me because I grew up in Dorchester and I really wanted to raise my kids there. However, the economics of greater Boston is different today than it was when my parents were raising me in the 80s and 90s, and it's prohibitively expensive to both own a home and send kids to private school. And Catholic schools are just not an option for us because my family's interfaith. My experience isn't unique. In Milton, many of the residents of this town have moved here from other places precisely because of the quality of our schools. And I have to say, the MPS community has far exceeded my expectations. The dedication of the staff, the commitment to social and emotional learning and academics are great. Like, all of these kids are getting an amazing experience. Milton is in demand today because we're a community that's on the border of Boston with excellent schools, a diverse population and invested residents. It's the responsibility of this body to exercise leadership through making tough decisions, which you're doing by weighing all sides of this. But the difficult choices.
30 seconds.
Thank you. The difficult choices that we fail to make today become the crises of tomorrow. If we sacrifice the quality of the Milton Public Schools, we sacrifice the economic health of this town. So let's not kill the goose that lays the golden egg. Now is the time to capitalize on the good work that's been done by the team. Continue to ask some questions, but consider to get this vote done as quickly as we can. The families of this town who also vote greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rose Maron, is she here? Oh, this, I see her.
Did some people leave that were on the list?
No, no. I just couldn't, she, she, four is yours, ma'am.
With your permission, I would like to slide my spot over to school committee chair, Lizzy Carroll.
She's already on. I got her. She's here.
Yeah, I'm just.
How much time we have left?
Want to be sure that she gets.
How many? I have one for three speakers.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Ada Rose Maron, 32 Columbine Road. As many of you know, I'm a former school committee member from 2017 to 23. I was the chair of the facilities advisory committee that conducted the first space need study to address overcrowding in our schools in 2019. I served as a vice chair of the school building committee for its first three years, and I can tell you that the school building committee has, has been working hard on this challenge for five years. And believe me, this is not a rush. Back in the early 2000s, I was a treasurer for the Friends of the Milton Schools, the campaign to rebuild and renovate all six of Milton Public Schools. We brought this question to the voters three times before it was ultimately passed. Back then, my youngest child was in kindergarten. Now, I'm a proud member of the grandmothers for Milton Public Schools. The bold action taken and courage shown by our former town leaders and residents solved a massive problem with six schools that were obsolete and falling apart. Our entire town is proud of our new schools since they were built and open. Our property values have soared ever since. Milton is a desirable town for young families with our proximity to Boston, our diversity and our excellent schools. Today, the stars have aligned. The land has been identified. A thoughtful plan is in place to address overcrowding at all levels. A price has been calculated. The land swap was passed by town meeting, and any day now before July 31st, it will be approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. The time has come to show courage and be bold for our children and our town's future. We have an opportunity to let the voters decide on this matter during a presidential election, when many more voters will go to the polls than at a local election in the spring. Our supporters will be energized by a victory in the fall and will be back to work hard again for an overdue operational override. This is a big moment and decision for our town. I'm glad you're going to take some time before you make a decision, but let's seize this moment, please. Let Milton vote in November to move our town forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Croninger.
Everybody, Mark Croninger, Precinct 7, Melbourne Road. Hope you can hear me. Thank you very much for all you guys have been doing to work on this. Thanks Sean and that group for all the hard work they put in. I'm the father of two boys who both went to Milton Public Schools and graduated from Milton Public Schools. I've always supported the schools. Both my sons were very active in the schools and activities and sports. One of my sons was at the 1909 building and came home one day and told me that a piece of a tile fell right onto his desk during the middle of class. So I'm familiar with the need to update schools and, and make things right. But as the old school saying goes, there's no such thing as a free lunch. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about people saying, make the hard decision, make the right decision, it's your responsibility. I would say the hardest decision would be to do your due diligence and walk through these parking lots every time you have to come do a meeting and listen to people with their kids chant, do the schools, vote the schools like it's some easy little issue that can be solved in a second. We're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars here, an unprecedented amount of money, I'm sure, for any school spending in this town. I've heard it compared to Waymouth or Brighton or Newton. Those towns are at least twice the size or more of our small-town Milton. So those are kind of apples and oranges comparisons when it comes to cost of school funding. And as was previously mentioned, most of those schools receive funding from the state. It's, I believe, we've been denied four times over the past several years, funding from the state. Why would that be? Does the state, the state think that our need is not quite as dire as maybe we all believe it is? Maybe so. Are there other people that are in line that haven't had the type of upgrades from the state that we enjoyed over the past couple of decades? Maybe so. That all being said, we need a real fiscal accountability to the taxpayers of this town. When I was out campaigning for town meeting, not only were there people that had kids that were concerned about the schools here and, and upgrading schools or overcrowding, which I totally, totally get, but there were several people, elderly people, that said, I'm afraid I'm going to be taxed out of this town. Again, there is no such thing as a free lunch in this world. And maybe people think we're the federal government that can just print money at a whim, but we can't. We're Milton and we have to deal with what we have. And it's not the school board's money, and it's not your money, and it's not the town's money, it's the people who pay the taxes of these towns. I would like to see an estimator created that shows what the cost per taxpayer, per $100,000 of assessed value on their home will be before there's any discussion of putting this on a ballot in November. Okay? Franklin just went through the same thing, where they were asking for a meager amount of money compared to this enchilada. And they created, the town created an estimator, people could go on what their assessed value is, put it in, and they would see an estimate of their tax burden that this was going to cause. We owe that to the citizens, we owe that to the people. Hey, if you've got kids in school, you're going to be paying more too. There are people here that are on fixed incomes that are going to be driven out of this town, and that's not fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So I have one person online. This one waiting?
There's four now.
So I'm, I only have enough time, so I'm going to do two things. I'm going to take the, the next speaker, because this room is full, we could go 45 minutes, two hours and 45 minutes. So I'm going to take Ms. Mung, and then Chair Carroll, I'm going to save you to speak when we get to, is that all right? We'll have you speak when we get to item, the next item. You can speak to this.
I could defer to Lizzy.
We could just speak together.
I'd rather give the chair her own time. What was, you're on the clock, so why don't you have to sit down and?
All right. I'm on the clock. I'm Dr. Mungar, 63 Granite Place, town meeting member for Precinct 7. Thanks for letting me speak. So I actually have three children in the school system right now, preschool, going into kindergarten, going into third, so definitely in the thick of it and super passionate about this. I actually ran for town meeting member last year specifically because the land swap was on the, the ballot for that fall. So really invested in this. As others have said, Milton schools are the crown jewel of Milton, right? It's not all that matters, but it is the best thing about Milton, period. So at this moment, we have that opportunity to do the right thing by putting this decision on the ballot for November and allowing residents to vote. The facts have been shared. The schools are overwhelmingly crowded. How could we say no to further pursuing the build of the school? No facts are going to change. The dollar amount is high, but nothing is going to change. We can't afford to kick the can and compound the problems. Expenses will be higher for building and other accommodation. Timelines will be longer. Classrooms are going to continue to be more crowded. And what about our teachers? Do you think that they are going to continue to stay in working conditions that are not setting them or their students up for success? Why, why would they? They could, teachers are in demand, they could go anywhere and they could have a smaller classroom. My third grader's class for French is 26 children for one teacher, single stream, 26 kids, five years. How is that manageable? Sean already said earlier that 369 kids are going to be in my incoming kindergartner's class. That's more than 20. That's more than 20 kids per class for kindergarten. This is not an easy job for you all. I totally respect that, and I don't envy your position, but it is still the job. What's the quote? Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting the same result, right? We can't keep operating the same way and expecting different results. I think someone else should say, like, we are where we are, we can't do anything about it. I don't agree with that. I think we actually need to be creative, and we need to increase our tax base by a bigger commercial base or other solutions. Our hands aren't tied. We're not expecting to pay $173 million tomorrow. We have some time, right, to prepare for this and to make some changes, and it's a hard job, but we have to start working and figuring out what we can do.
Thirty seconds.
So I know the same people that support the schools will also support the operational override. We can do both. We just have to figure it out, but we can make the right decision for our children, who I know we all agree are the most important. Thanks.
Thank you. Who do we have for time?
I have a minute thirty.
Dr. Carroll.
Good evening, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lizzie Carroll, 37 Randolph Ave. I'm here tonight as the Chair of Milton School Committee. We met on July 15th for our update from Sean and Work about the exciting preliminary design for the new school that you saw tonight. Since the cost was not yet available last week, we set another meeting for next Tuesday morning to have all the information when we, as a school committee, vote our recommendation on the school project as proposed, including the idea of putting it on the November ballot. In last week's discussion, school committee members continued to express what we have been saying for years, that the severity of our overcrowding requires a new school to be built ASAP. I'm really glad to hear you say tonight that you plan to meet within these next two weeks. That is actually the main thing I wanted to ask you to do, to vote before the August 7th deadline on whether to put a debt exclusion override for this project on the November ballot, as so many of our constituents have been calling on you to do. The school committee will provide you with our formal recommendation early next week. As the select board, of course, you are responsible to make the decision. So thank you for conducting your due diligence as Milton's governing body and scheduling a vote where you each go on the record with your position on this consequential matter before August 7th. The essential question is whether and how we will proactively address the prolonged harmful effects of persistent overcrowding on our students, more than five years after the town created the School Building Committee to address this problem. You must weigh many factors as you consider the prospect of a debt exclusion override, not least of which, as has been mentioned, our need to also pursue an operational override in the coming year. Both of these will be necessary for Milton Public Schools to continue providing the level of service our residents expect and deserve. As you have mentioned previously, Chair Wells, you and I have discussed as chairs how we must and will work together in the best interests of Milton residents, residents who include more than 4,400 MPS students and their families. I stand ready to partner with you on pursuing the operational override that all of our town departments will need to avoid disastrous cuts in services. Chair Wells, you refer to this challenging situation as sailing into uncharted waters, and it's true, this high-stakes moment demands our total focus. But your metaphor also reminds me that, as President Franklin Roosevelt said, "A smooth sea never made a skilled sailor."
That's true.
Although I sit in a different seat from you all, I trust that we, as the leaders of Milton, can rise to this challenge and provide the leadership that you have pointed out, you all have pointed out, we, as elected officials, owe to Milton's residents. They deserve to know where we all stand on whether and when they will get to make their voices heard at the ballot box, which is all that's being asked. Therefore, please follow through to schedule that special meeting within the next two weeks, so you can take your vote before the August 7th deadline. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. She knows I spend a lot of my time in the ocean, I know a lot about the sea. That concludes Citizen Speak. I know, I look at the list, and I chose tonight to pick the people who took the time to come here, even though we could allow people by Zoom to weigh in, but you've been coming here for several weeks now. We understand the significance of where this is at, so thank you all, and we're going to move to item four. Item four. Who's speaking? So item four is discussion approval, the American Rescue Act reallocation. I guess Dr. Burrows, Dr. Pavlicek. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Chair, I'll maybe give everybody a minute to
Oh, yeah, that's fine. We want to take a break? There weren't any screen left? No.
Mr. Chair, there are a few action items under this agenda item related to our ARPA funding. But first, I can discuss one of the reasons we're here. The school department has ended fiscal '24 in need of some additional funding to erase a budget deficit. Dr. Pavlicek, Dr. Burrows informed us of this in the past couple of weeks, and so we've been working to identify potential sources of funding to resolve that issue. The request, as it stands, is $415,000. The higher-than unexpected cost is mainly driven by special education and related expenses. I'll let Dr. Burrows and Dr. Pavlicek answer any questions about that or provide any additional commentary, if that would be helpful. And then I'm happy to speak to a suggestion on how to resolve it, which would involve changing some of the allocations on the federal funding that we've received. As we wind down all of the federal funding, we have some money left that has been allocated but not yet spent, which would be helpful in resolving this issue. I think, Mr. Chair, it might make more sense to speak with the school department than I can speak to more about some solutions.
Well, it's yours. Don't jump at once.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Excited to talk about it. So, related to our closing out FY '24 and why we stand before you today, in, just to kind of give you an overview of these special ed costs, which weren't predicted and couldn't have been predicted, when the budget was formed for FY '24 in the fall of FY '23, the
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, rather. The total cost of out-of-district placements was, we didn't have that percentage yet. It went up an unprecedented 16% for the following year. That, along with special ed transportation, which increased due to more evaluations, more students, both in kind of residential and non-residential placements, increased $800,000 beyond budget. And additionally, the transportation costs and the out-of-district placement costs in total was roughly $2 million. We had in reserve 1.5 million, and so we are short roughly that $415,000 right now. I will say that these costs were not, these are not costs that are optional costs, these are costs that we are required for students. I also know that when we run into situations like this, where the costs are what the costs are, our initial reaction can be to think that these costs shouldn't be happening, and I do want to say that these are costs that are needed by our students. So just in the context of our discussion about this and our need for these services, I just want to kind of put that out, that these are not things that we want to change and have go away, meaning we want to continue to provide what our students need. That being said, you know, related to our conversation around space and size, one of the things that our new special director of student services has identified is the ability to bring more of our programming in-house within our school district to reduce some of these costs, but that's a space issue in terms of being able to stand up some of those programs, because we just, right now, do not have space to do that. But we are working on bringing more of those out-of-district students back into the district where it makes sense. That's not going to be true for every student, but that can be true for some students, that we have the scale and capacity to serve. Do you have anything else you want to add, or?
Along those lines, just for some figures on it. Before COVID, we had roughly 48 students in out-of-district placements. Now we're at 67. That's a huge change in, you know, five years. Out-of-district placements can run in excess of $500,000 for one student. They are, it doesn't take many, it doesn't take many changes in that to do a lot to the budget. And in transportation costs, it's also the transportation costs of the small buses that bring, you know, students who are in district to school. If you're looking for a great money-making side job, you should open a transportation company, because they get about $20 per student per day to bring students, you know, from your house to your local school. And if you work that out, that's, you know, $3,600 per student who rides those small buses. It's quite
Are you making a futuristic announcement here?
Yeah, no. It's not enough for me, thank you. But if you're looking, it is
Is it for me? Oh, I get it. Questions, anyone? So, anyone sort of, I want to let Nick and
Oh, I have a bunch of questions.
So do you want to let Nick present? I want to do this first. It's up to you, I'll do whatever you want.
I know what Nick's proposal is, so
Okay. Do you want to let him make it for us, and then you can, or do you want to ask some questions first?
I think we should ask some questions first.
All right, go ahead. The floor is yours.
So I found out about, for those that don't know, this is my second year now of being the Chair of the Finance Committee. Prior to that, I served on the Warrant Committee and served another year here on the Select Board. I've been dealing with our town budget now for eight years. The first time I heard about this was on July 15th at 9:27 PM. I'm assuming that you guys knew about it prior to 9:27 PM on July 15th. Mr. Chair, you've been meeting with the school committee weekly, as you said at your last meeting, and I
Just the Chair.
Well, the Chair, the Chair of the school committee. These are people that should know about what's happening with their budget. My question is, why didn't we know before July 15th, which is literally the last day it is for us to make transfers from other accounts? It seems quite odd to me, Mr. Chair, that this came about at 9:30 at night on the 15th, the absolute last day for us to actually move money around in a way that would be more appropriate than taking money and moving money, which now I am not actually sure we can do without a town meeting vote, and that's why I asked to make sure that our town attorney was here. I have a lot of questions and concerns about this. I was told multiple times by Dr. Pavlicek that they would be able to cover the cost of the special ed, that there would be ways for them to do this. At this point in time, we are looking at $415,000 more that I have no idea about. Not one person from the school committee contacted me, not one person informed me that this was happening, and again, I've been dealing with our budget for eight years. That, to me, is a shame. The Select Board right now does not, I do not believe, has the authority to unanimously, unilaterally, increase the FY '24 budget without town meeting approval, even if it is coming from the ARPA funding, which I know is different, because we don't have to do a big vote on that. But we are changing the bottom lines of all of this budgeting. These ARPA funds that we are about to, that Mr. Milano is about to ask us to move, was something that has been appropriated for the broadband committee. Now let me just say this for the record. I have been in complete support of this broadband committee since I first found out about it. You walk from one room to another room in my house, and you lose cell signal. There is a massive problem with our broadband here in our town, and this committee has been working hard for more than five years to try and make this infrastructure a priority for the citizens of Milton. And now, we are making up for a $415,000 loss from the school committee that we didn't know about, again, until 9:27 on the last day that we could move anything from any other department. That, to me, Mr. Chair, is a real problem. Again, I was not notified that there was even a blip of something happening until then. This is not okay. If we had learned about this before the 15th of July, we could have moved between the departments with no problem, with no need to go back to town meeting, because that's something that we vote upon. But right now, what we're doing after the 15th of July, I do not believe that we can do without town meeting approval, and I would request that our attorney for the town weigh in on this. This is no small matter. This is a shame that this is happening
Oh, I know that.
Because Mr. Pavlicek did tell me that this was something that they would be able to cover. I am not here to say that the schools are not in need of this money. Obviously, we have to pay for it. Obviously, we have to cover it. But there's a lot of concerns here that the notice came at 9:27 PM on the last day. So, Mr. Chair, if we could ask the town council whether or not this is even a valid thing for us to do, I would appreciate that.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Because I was out of state, so I don't know
You knew nothing about this?
No.
Nobody had mentioned it to you?
No, not until I came back.
Okay, me neither.
So what happened at 9:27 at night? What did you send to me?
You sent an email.
Oh, okay.
That was the first email that we got, came from Nick Milano. 9:27, 7:15.
Okay.
Can I, I just want to, can I give some
Absolutely, you can do
Context in terms of how we arrived at this thought and suggestion? So, in terms of transfers, what are our options?
Go ahead.
So, I'll start there. So, the reserve fund is one option, which was drawn down for a number of items. We cannot do appropriation transfers, we can't take money from the police department and move it to the school department. That we can't do. So the reserve fund was the only option there, and there's about $240,000 in the reserve fund. That requires warrant committee approval. So that, due to timeline, was not a possible option for us. Appropriation transfers are never on the docket. We just can't do that. We can't take money from town departments and move to the school department. That's not allowed under state law.
Free cash.
Free cash requires a town meeting vote. On July 1, town free cash went away. Free cash no longer exists once we move from June 30 until July 1. So we don't have any free cash now, and we won't until it's certified by the Department of Revenue. Typical timeframe would be, you know, sometime in October. So that led us to other available funding sources, which are the grant funds. The Select Board is in control of the grant funding, and this would not be an increase to the school department appropriation. Their school department appropriation would save the same. These costs would be charged to a grant account on our books, and that is something the board can do if it so chooses to use these grant monies for that purpose. So the school budget doesn't change, costs borne by the school department would be charged under this grant account, which is what we've been doing for school nurse, for social and emotional support staff at the school department, for the town social worker in the Health Department was charged to the grant account, not to the town budgets.
What grant account are you speaking?
It's the ARPA.
The ARPA.
Our grant account.
There are grant accounts for all the ARPA's.
That's already finished, right? There's no more money in it. We're actually taking something from another department.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. So in terms of what can we charge to it, we can charge really what the Select Board chooses to charge to it within the rules of what the Treasury has laid out, what those dollars can be spent towards. So it's under the Select Board's control. In terms of what is available and unallocated, everything has been allocated, as Ms. Bradley points out. We have two tranches of money. One that is held by the town to be used under the Select Board's control. The other is money that we have to access through Norfolk County, but under the Select Board's control. So we have allocated this money in various ways over the past several years. We have spent most of this money over the past several years. What remains allocated but unspent is approximately $550,000, which was allocated to the municipal broadband project for the town INET. And this was under the category of revenue replacement through Norfolk County. So this gets a little tricky in terms of all these different names and terminologies and rules, but the way the U.S. Treasury set out rules on ARPA money, it said what, set stipulations on how it can be used. Water and sewer infrastructure is the big one that catches people's attention. Broadband was included that category, but Norfolk County has never seen, has not seen a broadband application. There is, however, another bucket of money under revenue replacement, which the Treasury said can be used for anything that a town does business doing. So basically, anything can go under the revenue replacement. So we had earmarked this $550,000 for broadband to come under the revenue replacement category, which was to come under the revenue replacement category, which was flexible, and the county would have approved that. However, with this new change and how we need to find some money with our limitations around the Reserve Fund, with our limitations around free cash and town meeting, it turns us to the ARPA funding and what can we do to resolve the deficit? Not in the air with a deficit as we're going up to bond potentially for a new project. We can't, don't want to have questions rated, but raised of financial management. We don't want to risk our debt rating. So I felt this was worth discussing and bringing to the Select Board as a possible solution. And as Ms. Bradley points out, this does not, this solves one problem in front of us. It does not solve the broadband problem, which is what the project that that money is allocated for is to replace the institutional network that connects the town and school facilities to the internet. That is a system we are paying Comcast twelve thousand dollars a year for. It is end of life, probably past end of life, really. So that remains a project that has to move forward. The issue is now we have to go find other money to make up for this change if the Board approves it. We have funded and paid for the design of that replacement network, which would connect all the town and school facilities with a new fiber system. What remains to be done is building it out, buying the fiber and installing the fiber. In addition to the work towards the INET, the Broadband Committee is also working with forty-eight thousand dollars of ARPA funding for Fiber to the Home as a master plan. That work is ongoing now. There's a survey out on our website, please take it, which addresses the next question that the town has talked about, which is, should we engage more deeply in potentially building out or thinking about Fiber to the Home? It's a separate process, would require additional funding over and above anything ever allocated under ARPA. And it is still ongoing. That work continues. That money isn't affected. And please do take the survey. That's online. We have about a hundred and sixty responses so far. We want to keep building that up. So anyway, that's the long, kind of winded explanation is the money is available because it hasn't been spent. It has certainly been allocated by this Board. The Board would need to reallocate it away from broadband, move it to other schools to solve the problem right now. However, we would then need to start working on a funding plan for the institutional network and get that to town meeting and have that move forward so we can replace our INET and not have six-strand fiber anymore running through the town to which something happens and could be problematic. So happy to take further questions if there are any on this.
Let me just finish up where you're, so I'm still on your first question? Do you still want Town Council to comment?
I'm gonna want Town Council, yeah, to comment because I've got some other questions.
Could you join us, Attorney Mill?
So if I may, Mr. Chair, as being the person that has served on the ARPA Committee as part of the Finance Committee, we made this process very transparent. We made it so that all of the businesses, all of the community groups, everybody that was coming forward to us knew what was happening with the money, and the funding was spent in a proper, transparent way, which is something we often talk about here at this committee, is the transparency and the vetting. And so that happened with the previous ARPA appropriations. I'm wondering if we should have a town meeting for a post-closing appropriation? Or if this is even an appropriate thing to be doing without a town meeting approval? Since they approved this money to be going towards the INET, if this money does go towards the school, we have zero plan to have the INET money returned. That was a project that was going to be finished by the end of this year. And there is nothing right now that shows that we have any plan to re-appropriate that money from any source. Town meeting was also guaranteed that this was money that was going to be given to them. So right now, we are above and beyond the law, in my opinion, because town meeting is the law. So walk me through how this is an okay thing.
Sure. So Peter Mello, Murphy HSC, Town Council. So I guess, off the cuff, you know, ordinarily, this is something I might, let me say this, in terms of the Select Board's authority to reallocate and the scope of the permissible purposes of the money, my understanding and the understanding that I would opine about off the cuff, as I am, is completely consistent with Nick's explanation. You know, in ordinary circumstances, I might, you know, run it by the DLS. But I, but I will say, listening to Nick's explanation, that's my, it's totally consistent with my understanding that this wouldn't require a town meeting approval and that the Select Board could, has the unilateral independent authority to reallocate the money and that it is within the permissible scope of expenditures under the rules that govern ARPA money.
And is it possible for us to have a town meeting for post-closing appropriation?
Is it possible? I mean, you, the Select Board can always call a special town meeting. Necessary, right? I mean, I guess the distinction, there's a distinction to be drawn, whether it's possible, whether it's necessary. I don't, as I'm sitting here right now, again, off the cuff, without having drilled down in all the particulars of it, I don't believe it's necessary. I believe the Select Board has unilateral authority to take the vote.
So the Select Board is changing the budget? And that's something that you think is okay? Because Nick is, what he's saying is that it's not, it's like an accounting issue. But what's really happening is that part of the town money, part of the ARPA funding that is for the town, is now going towards the school. So we're changing the budget.
But that's the Select Board's choice, and the Select Board put it, that, put it towards broadband in the first place. Select Board can say, hey, never mind, we're gonna put it towards this in the second place. And the Select Board has chosen to fund positions that are within the School Department, not paid by taxpayers, and has, through this process, through the Finance Committee and the Select Board, has funded numerous positions. It's not in the budget anywhere. It does not appear anywhere in the budget.
When they, when they get their, when they put out their budget, they say these positions are paid by ARPA.
But it's not appropriated in any way. It's not voted upon by town meeting. Town meeting has no say on those positions whatsoever. And it's same for our Health Department, the social worker that we have in the Health Department. In the first year, it was not in the budget, anywhere in the budget. This year, in fact, in the fiscal twenty-five budget, we are paying about four hundred thousand dollars of our health insurance. We're gonna pay out of ARPA funding. That was one of the tools we used to get to a balanced budget. Out of the Treasury ARPA. That was not appropriated by town meeting, was not on the, on the topic, was not in the warrant article for town meeting. It was in the commentary to provide context, but it was not a vote that town meeting had to take. The Select Board has spent nearly all the ARPA money directly without any further approval, town meeting or not.
Okay. What's the plan for replacing the four hundred and fifteen? I mean, I just, I will not take this vote. I will be a no vote on this until we have an actual plan in place that the four hundred and fifteen that was guaranteed to the INET for broadband committee is restored.
No, I agree with that. It can go through the capital budget and be included in the capital budget. And I would also point out, it could be, it does not have to be cash. It could be borrowed. We could use some borrowing authorization, pay for it over fifteen to twenty years, depending on the life of the equipment. So there's a couple of different funding options. If we have strong free cash, it could be free cash if we want to.
By the end of this year? That's when they were gonna, if they had gotten this ARPA funding, this would be done by the end of the year?
Correct, no.
So now we're not gonna be done by the end of the year?
If this Board feels strongly about it, it could go to a fall town meeting. It does not have to wait for the annual town meeting necessarily. It could go to a sooner town meeting, whenever the Board calls for one. But that would be the next opportunity to appropriate funding for it would be either the next town meeting or the annual town meeting. So not by the end of this calendar year, in terms of getting the project completed.
This is a real shame, is all I'm gonna say. It's a real shame.
Can I ask you a question? So let's have the reality of, can either doctor supply to us? What would you do if you don't get this? To me, that's the more pressing issue right now.
We would, there still is some money in the Community Schools Funds that we would have to appropriate to this. There could be, there is some money in the Food Service Fund that might be appropriate to appropriate to this. That's a little trickier. That's a federal program, and you have to be very careful about how you spend that money. But it would have to, would have to come from some other source that we would, you know, have to look at in terms of what is currently in revolving funds.
But we may have to replace that. If you put that to this, then we may have to replace that.
Well, it's, it would just have a smaller balance in some of those accounts.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you. I think, you know, I agree that this is, you know, sort of caught us off guard with this. We didn't expect this, and we got it sort of last minute. And it's not a small chunk of change. It's quite a bit of money. Of course, special is important, and we want to pay for special ed. My question is, when you're looking at special ed costs, what factor are you using to anticipate increases? Because we all know that transportation increases every year. We all know the cost of education increases. So my question is, this came in at sixteen percent over from what you sent us. But my question is, what percentage are you anticipating year to year? Because this is a huge, this is a huge gap. Sixteen percent is not three or four percent. This is a large amount of money. And, you know, at a time when we're looking at an operational override as well, I mean, when I hear this, I'm thinking, well, you know, maybe we should be doing that right now because, you know, of what you're saying. So I'm trying to anticipate because we don't want to run into this the following years. So what factor are you using for anticipation of this?
We've been generally using six percent for medical and special ed-related costs as inflation factor over the last few years, where we were using one to two percent for most items. Those costs, we would plug it in at six percent. I do say when this was approved by the state, the large raise, rate increase, districts across the state went crazy. They all said, you can't, after the fact, tell us there's a sixteen percent raise. And, you know, our special, our out-of-district placement budget is in excess of six million dollars. So it's a million dollars right there that you had budgeted for, you know, less than half of. So it was, there was a large shoe and cry across the state. And for what it's worth, it wasn't worth much. But it is something that we're facing across the state with all the districts right now. I mean, you've seen other districts that have encountered this problem over the last couple of years too, which is one of the reasons we said at town meeting this spring, we were asking for a larger appropriation for twenty-five than we, you know, would normally have projected over twenty-four because twenty-four, we knew, was in a hole. And so we had to make that up in our twenty-five budget, you know, as well as project the increased cost for twenty-five. So it, we knew it was a problem then. It just, the magnitude of the problem just kept growing on us. And when we had, you know, a million and a half dollars in reserves for special education, we thought for sure that would cover this, and it just kept going through the end of the year. This is all.
Two quick questions. First, so the out-of-district placement cost is six million dollars. I feel like earlier you alluded to the idea that that cost might actually be reduced if we had more special ed space in district. Do you anticipate if we had a new school building with the special ed spaces that was required, that cost would be reduced?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would provide space, not just in a new building, but across the district. So, yeah, we would be able to absolutely bring that number down.
So that's important to know because I think we often hear about cost. We don't often hear about benefits. The second question, well, related to this topic. When, so I, just in terms of a budgeting timeline, I run a department at Yale, and I get a monthly update on my budget. And so I kind of have some sense of how things are being spent or not spent. And we certainly have, you know, unexpected costs. But I'm just curious about how, you know, there was no early indication that this was gonna be a potential problem. Because like a month earlier, this is a whole different conversation. And I'm just curious, not so much to sort of look back and point fingers, but more looking forward, what kind of assurances can we have that we're really making sure that the budget's not gonna have this kind of a spike in the future? You know, even with the state, you know, coming in, like that might have been a good time to go and say, okay, let's crunch the numbers and figure out what this is gonna do to us in the long time, or long term, and that didn't happen.
So we had, we had, you know, roughly one point five in reserve. And as Glenn was kind of tallying, and you can speak to this yourself, but as Glenn was tallying these last expenses that were coming in that were not encumbered, you know, and some of these costs are one or two placements or one or two things that someone didn't put an invoice in for or, or, you know, kind of like end of year close-up where your, where some of these costs are kind of rising to the surface. That one point five, which Glenn predicted would be enough, we kind of crested that one point five, and that's where, you know, Glenn started, and I started talking with Nick and Amy to talk about, okay, like, we, our processes and procedures didn't catch that we, that these costs were coming in. And do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are times too. For instance, if someone is, has a special education bus, the Department, the Special Ed Department will put in a purchase order that'll encumber money for the entire year for that bus, for that child. Generally speaking, you only pay for the days the child goes to school. Sometimes these children have extended illnesses and so forth. So at the end of the year, a lot of those encumbrances get wiped out with no expenses against them. And we always expect that. It didn't happen to the extent that it usually does this year. That and the other factor that plays into this are utility bills, which are also not an encumbered expense for the town because we just, you know, get the bills on a monthly basis. And our, I think, what are we going out for? Is it gas this year? Is it, we have another bid coming out for utility bills. And so we did, utility bills were slightly above. I mean, we spend over a million dollars a year on electricity. So another hundred thousand there is easy to happen in this climate. As we all know, utility bills are unpredictable, despite, you know, best efforts of the town and the schools collectively to bid them.
Mr. Chair? I just wanna, I just want to, without a plan in place for replacing those ARPA funds, I'm wondering if we can kick this to our next meeting and have Nick come up with a plan to replace that ARPA funding?
I don't think he can this year. I just don't. We've had a discussion already.
We have to close this out. We, if we're gonna do this, this deficit needs to be erased ASAP so we can close our books on fiscal twenty-four. In addition to that, we would need to work with the county to get this squared away and to receive the money. If we don't receive the money by sixty days after June thirty, then all of this would been for naught. In terms of a plan for INET, I can bring to this Board a request to submit it to the Capitol and to move that forward as, you know, through this process. If the Board wants to take up putting it on the next town meeting warrant, we can do that at the next meeting. There's those options in terms of what the plan could be for the INET system. But again, that's, that's in terms of thinking towards, working towards the next town meeting, firming up when, when that might be and what that article could be. And in this case, it could include the appropriation to replace this one here. The last fact I just wanted to mention, and I didn't and I should have, is the timeline on ARPA is closing down. And the county is going to be, has informed us they're going to be monitoring anybody that has projects that go past the end of this calendar year. So in terms of where broadband might end up, it could end up where it's being built out fall, winter, twenty-four, really, spring of twenty-five. The county really doesn't want to be spending money past the end of this calendar year. So it might give us more breathing room to get that project done without putting at risk any of the federal money as well. So there's a timeline perspective in terms of building out the broadband correctly with a little bit more breathing room if it's funded solely with town dollars. Or this portion is just non-ARPA-related because those timelines are coming up quick. So there's another benefit to, not a benefit, but that gives us a little bit more flexibility in using the monies rather than retaining just it being funded by the federal funds.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions. Total number of kids in special ed right now? And how many outplacements, I think you told me?
Sixteen or seventeen percent, yeah.
Yeah, it's seven hundred and seventy approximately.
Seven seventy in special ed? And how many outplaced? I think you said sixteen.
Sixty-eight are outplaced.
You talked about Medicaid numbers, Medicaid funding. What percentage of the kids are getting? What percentage of the kids are getting Medicaid reimbursement? And, and what does that number look like yearly?
We get about 150,000 to 200,000 yearly in Medicaid reimbursement. We use it to fund some of the special ed positions, but we put some of it aside every year into a Medicaid revolving fund to try to mitigate some of these costs. So we had built up close to a half million dollars in the Medicaid fund, which we, again, use as our, our reserve fund, if you will.
Final couple of questions. What factor are you going to use going forward in terms of anticipating costs? Because this went up 16%. So what do you anticipate you're going to use as a factor going forward?
I would be stunned if the state would do something like that again. I, I will not be building the fiscal '26 budget. So I, I will defer to my successor.
Yeah, I mean, I think like Glenn said, the, the following year was around 5%. So that was a kind of once in a lifetime increase. And I think, you know, as I reflect on how we've, we've managed our special ed costs over time, we've always had this cushion and have been able to respond to these increases. This year, given all these, this, this kind of monumental year, we were not able to do that. So I think it, it falls to me and to Katie Blake, who was our new assistant superintendent, to plan in a new environment and, and, and kind of look ahead and, and be able to predict some of these things as the wave is starting to crash and not be able to rely on those, those reserve funds, which have, we've never, I mean, when's the last time we spent those reserve funds down completely?
So my follow up to, yes, my follow up to that is, if you're spending those all down, what happens in the meantime when things come up? You have no reserve. You did talk about some other funding though, that you had to potentially cover this. Didn't you, about this 400,000 or part of it?
Well, I mean, with something like the community schools revolving fund, when people pay into community schools their tuition, that money legally can only be used to support the community schools program. You can't reallocate it to do something else. You can't, you know, so the question is, can you? We do, for instance, every year, charge back community schools a certain allowance for heating the buildings while they're in there, a certain allowance for custodial service while they're in there. They pay their own staff directly out of that fund. But there are certain, you know, extra costs that we build back to them. So the ability to charge money against the community schools account really falls to, you know, can you justify it? In terms of this is actually a community schools account. People aren't paying to go to the after school program to fund, you know, the athletic program at the high school. Their, that money has to be used for that purpose. So you're, you, it's there, but it's of limited accessibility to us, you know, legally, because you can't, you just can't reappropriate it to anything. So drawing down, drawing down from there is.
It's not really available.
Is there anything else that might help mitigate it more? That's all I'm asking. You know, we're talking 400,000. Is there somewhere that you're able to locate 200,000 or something? I don't know, just throwing it out, just throwing it out there, you know?
I asked that question the day I was told.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Green.
Can I say one thing?
I have a couple, but I'll go last. Go ahead, you go.
Thank you, Dr. Pavlichek, for sharing that information with me about the special ed program. My, my wife teaches special ed and it's unpredictable. Totally unpredictable. What, you know, this late thing, I understand is a different issue. But, but, but special ed in itself, somebody could come up tomorrow and I say, my kid has special needs and you have to deal with it and you have to address it. But that, to me, brings up the operational and the operational override and how critical it is to the school, the school. And we don't know and, and we need to know. And that's, I just, a comment I wanted to make. And I wanted to thank you for that information. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my piece of this has absolutely nothing to do with special ed. I don't care if we went over because of a custodial needing extra hours. I don't care what the reason is. I have spent the last three years trying to make the school and town budget one piece. I have worked with the former chair. I have worked with our former finance committee chair for years to make us one budget and not make us the town and the school separate budgets. And now I feel like that's where we are. We had, we, and I'm really talking about me, had no idea that this was coming. And the fact that there was no information given to the select board, given to the finance committee at all about this shortfall before the last, like, the deadline had already gone by, you guys knew about this. And so for me, I'm sitting here and I am really trying very hard to, to say it's okay to take from something that the town agreed to, that the select board has agreed to, that everybody has agreed to as being a needed thing, to give to the schools with no plan in place for us to replace that needed thing that the town has, the town meeting members have agreed to, the select board has agreed to. I don't even, I haven't even heard from the broadband committee. What do they think about this? I don't know what they're going to do. And so for me, I'm just, I am imploring the school committee and you, Dr. Burrows, to work with us as the select board and let us know when something like this is happening prior to the, beyond last day of us doing anything. Because this really ties our hands. And now you, we are taking from another thing that we have wanted to do to pay for this. And I will vote for it because we have to pay our bills. I mean, everybody has to pay their bills, even though it stinks. But this is not the way that I want us to move forward as a town, as two big players in this. This is not what I have been working for, for five years. I've been working for us to be together. And there's been no words until, I'm not going to say it again, but I am, 9:27 PM on the 15th of July. So, Mr. Chair, I'll vote in favor of it. But I got to say, I'm really hopeful that we can find a way to fund what we guaranteed town meeting members, what we ourselves have voted on previously. This is, this is, this is really a hard vote.
We take a lot of hard votes, so thank you. I, I'm just going to comment just briefly. And I've been in a lot of roles in my time here. And the first, as you know, my friend, is, is unanticipated. Whether I do not expect it, Mr. Milano told me, but believe me, I get spent. And I understand it and I understand how difficult it is. And I know the, the pressure, I don't want to use the word brand, the pressure that places upon your budget each and every year. The second thing is, it's not unprecedented. You may be here this year, but I've, as a department head, had to come with an unprecedented. When you have a significant crime wave, and I can think back to a specific year, I think it was 2009. I remember very vividly, and you all as well, in 2015, 2016, when we received over 116 inches of snow in a matter of four weeks, what that did to our DPW snow and ice budgets, as well as all of our public safety departments. Those are significant. Anything could happen tomorrow. And I'll disagree with the one word, Ms. Bradley. I know she's using the word guarantees because when you get a budget, you, you like to think it's guaranteed, but pressures change things. And in my eyes, this is just one of those cases where we have to do it. Not to take away from the broadband, but you have to meet your priorities. And that's why, as Chair Cowan knows, and all, and you've heard me in all of our meetings, as Mr. Green, I worry frantically about operational needs because if we were a year out in this, there is no ARPA. There is no, we didn't have that. ARPA is gone. And then what do you have to do? So I'm going to make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act allocations as presented by Mr. Milano tonight.
I'll second.
Motion's remain second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, we're all, yeah. Yeah, we're all, yeah. Thank you.
I never get to vote first.
Before you leave, as Dr. Pavlichek alluded tonight, and for his colleagues who are here as well as his past colleagues, he has given immense commitment and dedication of his life to this town. And we owe him a debt of gratitude. I say we stand and give him a wish. He didn't expect that from me. I'll tell you a funny story just before he goes. When I met him when he was first campaigning many years ago for school committee, he was in a famous, famous music venue that no longer exists. Most people would never believe, if they didn't know him, that he was in. Kevin in the back can agree, he was in a beach coma. He was in a beach coma campaigning at a music venue many years ago. So, thank you both. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Will we go home now? Moving on. Discussion update, item six, we don't have, are we going to, I don't see, do you want to, you want to defer this to the next meeting? The State Building Committee's meeting tonight, so the fact that he's not here, I think I'm just going to defer that. What's the matter? We all right?
Yeah, we're nice.
Item seven. Select Board Policy Committee, Board Committee Reports to the Select Board. Oh, my God. I'm a mess.
I think this is me, actually.
It is.
If you want to defer, you can.
It's a very, it's a very quick one.
He's not taking it.
And actually.
Mr. Zoll's the chair.
I am the chair of the Policy Committee, so, you know, say a prayer for me and for the town. Just a quick one on this. So we, we had a short meeting to kind of talk about some initial topics. And actually, in citizen speak, Mr. Lusio brought up this very same topic that we're, we're going to consider some kind of a policy that would require committees to report back minutes so that they, they can, so that, so that there's basically, as he'd said earlier, to increase the transparency in the town, better understand the, the roles and workings of the committees. There's a couple of other things that we're looking at in terms of committees where we're looking towards, for some other towns, for examples, on appointments and that. But we'll, we'll, we'll be addressing that sort of more later when we have sort of examples. And thank you, Mr. Milano, for sending me an initial look pass at those. But I, we just wanted, I think, to report back that that's something that we're considering. So it was a well timed citizens' comment because I think that's something that, that everyone's concerned about, making sure that we have minutes in from the committees. So I think that was all that we wanted to report back on. Was there anything else? I don't think so. It was like a 15 minute meeting.
It was a very short meeting. Some of the other, you can see by our agenda, some of the other topics that we took up was naming.
Yes.
So we are going to ask for some feedback from the select board on this. Because we are now going to, I don't know what the right word, I was going to say declassify, but that's not right, decommission the Carol Blute Room at Town Hall. There will then be no, no buildings or rooms named after a woman or person of color in our entire town.
Are we really doing that?
Well, it's going to move.
I never heard that. Let's, I've never heard that.
We will have a new meeting room that most likely will mean very, folks will need to use Blute much less frequently.
Much, much less. So we will not be using it as we are currently. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, but we will be decommissioned.
Well, her name is still going to be on it, but nobody will be using it. So there will be no, no reference of a woman of anything in this town. Every building, every field, every, everything is named after a man. And so what we've been discussing is looking at other towns and how they go about naming things and whether there's a naming committee or what that looks like. We have no idea. But it's something that I think in 2024, we should really take a hard look at and making sure that we are representative of the entire town, which has women and people of color in it too.
Yeah, I think that, that was, that was the gist of it. And just to ensure there was transparency in the naming process and maybe pulling in like the historical commission that can make suggestions. Like they've got the David Chestnut Jazz Festival that happens at the Eustace Estate, which is named after a gentleman of color who was, used to work at the Eustace Estate and was a sort of pioneer for jazz in New York. So there's probably some other examples out there that we, we, we may not necessarily know about, but certain other people may know about. So just making sure that as we think about new buildings in the future, new rooms in the future, you know, whatever, whatever happens to the old fire station, that we're, we're being thoughtful about the folks that we're honoring.
So just for everyone who is at home watching, who remembers Mrs. Blute, as I do, when you walked in the room, you bowed to Mrs. Blute. You didn't get anything done without Mrs. Blute. She was so.
She's quite a fixture.
Quite a picture, quite a picture in that building.
But imagine never going in that room again and needing to use it.
But I, I think you're going to be surprised. I, you'll be shocked how mu, how much meetings are going to increase. You, he disagree? He doesn't? Oh, I think requests are going to come.
A new room with new requests.
Okay.
Can I say something? So a couple of quick things with regards to that. So I would say with the committees, I agree that we need to have minutes. I think, and that you know that, Ms. Bradley knows I'm big on that, that we need to have the minutes. And I actually would hope that we would look at the fact if you have a committee and you're outstanding of, say, three months' worth or whatever of minutes, that you shouldn't be able to meet. Because if we get a request from a resident, you know, then, you know, it's using our town resources to try to figure it out and, and get the information for people. And so I think, you know, if, I think two or three months is okay. I wouldn't want to go past it, you know, for something that, that meets once a month. I, I just, yeah, I'm looking at both of you.
I know. I write in the note, yes, because I'm not.
So I think, I would say that's one thing. I think the other thing with regards to appointments and committees and so forth, Ms. Bradley and I did a really big project, I would say, right? Where we did a new, a new form and there's a handbook. And so I think we should be looking at the handbook a little bit more. So that's what I would say. So there is something already in process to take a look at because we worked on that.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the, the other thing related to minutes too is reporting back from committees to select board. Whether or not we want to have everybody report all the time, probably not. But we may want to have at least one report per year and maybe it's submitted written or something like that. But we'll be bringing policies for consideration. But definitely welcome any input.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
That's it for that, Mr. Chair.
We got nothing.
Moving right along. I'm past 9:15, I'm so mad at myself.
No, you're not. It's 9:12.
No, it's okay. So item, I have it right here. I see them here. Nine.
Oh, appointments, that's right, number eight first.
But I want to take care of the, so I want to jump to item nine. That's what I wanted to do. I want to jump to item nine, invite our directors. Kevin, you can come too. Sorry for the delay. So this is an application from Milton Arts Center on the Chamber of Commerce to use Manning Park. Am I correct? Is that what you're here for? Yeah, to use Manning Park on September 6th at 4:00 PM for the first Friday back to business.
Thank you.
Don't worry, just throw it at me.
All right.
Good evening. How are you? Good evening, if you just, I, state your name and the fours is yours. Thank you for waiting.
Good evening. I'm Bridgette Conroy. I'm on the Board of Directors at the Art Center and I'm also on the Event Planning Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. And the Milton Arts Center and the Chamber are getting together this year for the Milton Arts Center's Traditional First Friday in September and bringing it outside onto the deck. And there's going to be food, music, artisans, games, family friendly event. And we're asking for permission to use the deck. September 6th, 4 to 6.
Questions, comments?
4 to 8. 4 to dusk.
4 to 6 or 4 to 8, what do you want? Pick, pick a number.
Well, I think the permit is dusk and, you know, the latest it would be 8:00 AM.
Okay. No, why don't we just say, yeah, 4 to dusk and then you'll be all right. How's that? Any questions, comments, motions?
Anything else you'd like to say about the event to let people know about it?
There'll be music. So, you know, the Chamber of Commerce usually does Halloween Stroll. And, you know, it'll be slightly similar to that, but there'll be, the first Fridays, we always focus on music. And, you know, it'll be slightly similar to that, but there'll be, the first Fridays, we always focus on music, local musicians, and we'd like to have local artisans represented here and along with all the small businesses representing.
Chamber businesses.
Yes, in trade with the Chamber, a lot of the businesses will have tables, they have multi businesses. You know, welcoming people back from the summer. We'll have a handful of local talented musicians, including possibly Mr. Zoll.
You said talented, so I don't know.
But it'll be a handful of local folks that'll be participating. And it's gonna be fun. It's another opportunity to use the Manning Deck, Manning Park, for the community and to show what a great space it is and to, you know, put it to some more use.
And we're hoping to make it an annual event.
Well, you know where I am on that, you know what I did last year. I wanted to do this summer, but haven't been able to do it yet. But so, the only thing I will ask is, you will need some help from us. And those, I'll give you pointers on what hurdles we had and you can check with Nick on Nick and we can make sure that happens because power is definitely an issue on that. You're gonna bump up on the power. Do you wanna bring the stage? You're gonna wanna bring the stage or anything? What do you, you don't have to answer that, but those are things you wanna think about.
Yeah, we are. We had a discussion with Nick a couple of months ago about some possibilities. But we'll pull something together.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, wait, you have a question?
I just wanted to say, I think it's a great idea for the square.
Thank you.
It is. Okay, then I'll make the motion. Move to, I'll make a motion to approve the application from the Milton Arts Center and Chamber of Commerce to use Manning Park on Friday, September 6, 2024, at 4:00 PM for the first Friday back to business.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for patience. Pray for sun. It's the most important thing.
Yeah, we haven't even talked about a main date.
Just don't think about it. It won't happen. Okay, item 10, discussion approval. Oh, eight, discussion approval, application from Milton Arts Center, no. I thought we just finished that. Oh, we're gonna, so town committee appointments, all right. So, we are going to defer, I'm deferring on that one. And so, then we have.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust were hoping to defer as well because they're in the process of recruiting some diverse members. Currently, it's an all-white board and they have a couple of conversations going. So, they would like to have, and maybe if we meet again next week, we could, if they have applications in, great. If they don't, then they don't. They would like to have a more representative body for the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust, both geographically and racially.
We have two more openings, though.
This is, there's two slots that are open.
After this.
No, this is it. These are the two.
I, my understanding, and I double-checked this, is it's a minimum, it has to be a minimum of five. And right now, there are seven members. I may have been the one who stated it was a max of nine. I don't know where I got that.
I saw that somewhere, though. I did see that somewhere.
In which case, as Mr. Zoll points out, if these two appointments are listed, are appointed, that would fill it out. And it sounds like we may get applications in imminently.
So, if we could get a week to consider that, they would appreciate it. That, this is on behalf of the trust. They discussed it last night.
I don't wanna do it in that these two kids are two of the young, like, they've just, they both came here and sat tonight. They both heard us say it. They put in, they just left. I'd be more inclined to appoint them. I really would. I get, I get what you're asking, but I'm more inclined.
I just worry that the Affordable Housing Trust then is just overwhelmingly white men from, you know, and not diverse. It's a concern. I mean, we wanna be representative of geographically across.
I get that.
And racially.
I get that. But we fight so hard to get people to come out. We said at last meeting, and I thought it was, I thought I said four because I thought you said we had four.
But we had four when there were two, when we were appointing two last time.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can, this was a big thing that I spoke about a lot when Ms. Musto and I were going over the boards and committees and the application process and making it more transparent. One of the things that happens is that people of color feel like it's not worth their time to even try. And the fact that the Affordable Housing Committee is actively having conversations right now with some people, I would just like to say that giving it another week to see if we do get some people of color that would like to apply, I think that is a big step forward for our committees. And also, our DEI Committee, which basically said to us, we have a disproportionate amount of white folks on our committees as it represents to our town demographics.
Go ahead.
Would it be too much to ask to have some of the existing people step down to allow for this to happen?
I don't do that.
There's no maximum.
Mr. Chair.
There is no max.
There's no max.
So, I'm fine with that. So, let's appoint these two kids and then let's, if we get two more next, I'm fine with that. And that's why I was like.
That's fine, too.
I said publicly when we made the last appointments, I asked you, and I know the number was four. So, I'd be inclined to appoint these two tonight and then two additional.
So, if we have the ability to appoint some more diverse candidates.
As long as we.
I'm fine with that. Listen, I'm fine with that. I'm not.
I just don't wanna discount.
It's hard enough to get people to put their name forward.
I 100% support that. Whenever somebody puts their hands up, you don't, you're always begging people to apply for things. So, I'm okay with that.
May I say something?
Sure. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Just kick me.
I think the other thing is, just in general, I think that, you know, when we looked at the whole process of the committees and stuff and so forth, we also looked at the fact that we have, you know, certain people that are on committees for multiple years. And so, you know, always, I mean, I'm willing to have more people on a committee, but I feel like sometimes it's too big of a committee, too. So, maybe what the process should be, and we should really look at this, too, is we have, you know, people on this committee and other committees that have been there for a very long time. And it's good to have a few that have the longevity. But when you have people that are applying, you know, it is good to get different voices in. And so, you know, whether they're old, young, whatever color they are, or, you know, whatever. I just feel like we need to look at that, too. So, I think sometimes we're not really doing that enough either. Which was the point when Ms. Bradley and I were doing this, was to have some variety, you know, new voices on committees and so forth. So, I just would say that always expanding committees isn't always a solution. Sometimes it's looking at what you have. And if you have applications for that committee beyond these two people that have applied, maybe you have to look at who's on the committee and replace two people with two new voices.
Specifically, specifically if they hold more than one role on board committee. I mean, that's part of it, though, is that we talked about boards and committees and about how multiple people hold multiple roles on both boards and committees. And so, people, you know, if we could, if this is a thing, then people should think about how many committees or boards should they be on because really, you should serve on one thing.
I agree.
I agree with that. I think that, you know, for me, it's, we've already just appointed the whole slate and they just got sworn in at Town Hall for, you know, for this last go-through. So, at any rate, I don't think that we need to continue the discussion right now, but I think it's, because we're still trying to recruit folks, so I think I'm fine with that. Mr. Milano, maybe for the whole slate, can you let us know which ones have, are there any that here that are capped that we would have to pick from or?
One of them, I think we do.
Of the whole slate, it's Climate Action.
Climate Action, we do.
The board has to make some decisions.
So, can I call, let's, can I get a motion on the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust? Can I get a motion on these two candidates?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Chisholm Jr. and Sean Bentley to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the next, the easiest one. Youth Task Force.
Can I say something first about the Youth Task Force? So, I'm gonna pull a mom moment. Robert Beato would like to withdraw his name and he forgot, everyone will laugh now. Everybody, he forgot, he's been training and he forgot to email. So, he, because of track and because of Nationals, he just can't.
And you are his mom.
And I am his mom and I'm really sorry.
I don't even know if this is legal. How old is he?
He's 15.
I'm gonna say it. He's 16 years old. He's here at this next meeting.
No, because of track and because of Nationals, he's missed a lot of meetings. He feels really bad. He wants to open it up.
He's doing homework to replace himself.
He's doing so much homework, so yes.
I'll nominate Griffin Angus, Giselle Demont, Christina Lilahook, Rachel Posar, Zadie Rose, and John Barkes.
For reappointment.
Reappointment for the.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, Council on Aging Board of Directors, I guess that's an all. So, candidates for reappointment, I need a motion on one, two, three, four people. If someone wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the following individuals as members of the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term. Jean Leslie Marshall Levy, Denise Rockland, and Lorraine Sumner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zoll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, do I have a motion for candidates for associate members?
Sure. I'll move to appoint the following individuals as associate members to the Council of Aging Board of Directors for a one-year term. David Cornish and Yvonne Ready.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Zoll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Climate Action Committee, one candidate, do I have a motion for the candidate for reappointment?
I'll move to reappoint Lisa Troy for another term of, was it one year, two years?
One year.
One year.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, candidates for appointment. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have eight. For how many, to my right, am I, for three.
And Mr. Milano can appoint one.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna do that tonight, too? Are you gonna pick one?
Sure.
Okay.
So, Mr. Milano and I both got an email from Mr. Hasha, the chair, I think, of CAPC, recommended two of the three candidates, Dr. Stephen Popkin and Matt Panucci. Although that recommendation stated that everyone else is, looks like a great candidate, too, and seems qualified. So, they deferred to the Select Board, but those were their two recommendations.
Correct.
Yep. So, I only know two, so there's two that I, so, one of them is Matt Panucci. So, and the other is Eric Miller. So.
I would like to nominate also, well, I would also nominate also S. Kyle Johnson to be part of the committee along with Popkin and Panucci.
So, S. Kyle Johnson.
He's not on here, though.
S. Kyle. Candidates for appointment. He is, I missed him and probably what you're looking at, Roxanne, but he's listed on the agenda. That is correct.
I got it. He's on there.
Yep, I transposed it wrongly.
Matt Panucci.
Yep.
And Stephen Popkin.
Stephen Popkin.
Yep. So, those three and then Nick can do his.
All right, hold on. Those are yours. Do I have any, and so, I will make a motion to appoint Eric Miller. Do I have a second? Oh, no, do we second those others?
Should we do, should we do Panucci and Popkin first?
Yeah, I wanna do that. Okay. So, go ahead. Why don't you make that as a motion?
To appoint Matt Panucci and Stephen Popkin to the Climate Action Planning Committee for a term of one year.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint S. Kyle Johnson to the Climate Action Committee, Planning Committee, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, okay. All those in favor?
Because we have one more, Roxanne.
You have one more. You have one more?
Well, I was gonna say that, R. Eric Miller.
Yeah, that's it. So, that's.
That's all four, right? Nick?
Do you have someone different you wanna pick? Who do you, I don't.
Nick wants to pick R. Eric Miller.
I'm happy to recognize you. Sorry. So, the board has its appointments.
All right.
That works.
That works?
Sure.
All right, so, do yours first.
I think you made a motion and I seconded it.
I did. It's already on the table.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Milano.
I'll appoint Mr. R. Eric Miller to the Climate Action Planning Committee.
There's a need.
I recommend that the Select Board affirms my appointment.
I will make a motion to affirm his appointment.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done with that. All right, moving on.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Did you wanna say something?
We did it.
We did the reappointment.
Can I, just for the board's thoughts?
Go ahead. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, I think we have, and I think Dr. Hasha will attest that this is a group of folks who are very interested. So, if the board was ever interested in opening the idea of an associate member or some of that kind of position to keep some folks who are involved, not in formal roles as committee members, but maybe to create a pathway for them to take over when openings open up. So, maybe something to think about for the future as we have, this is one of the few times where we have too many people to fill.
Do you wanna come forward with that on a later date? We'll gladly put that on the agenda. All right with that?
And maybe let the applicants who weren't appointed know that that's something that's in process.
Okay.
Did we get through everybody?
Yes, okay.
Did we get, oh, no, we skipped.
No, I deferred it. Okay, so, item 11, am I correct? Item 11?
You are. You are. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the Milton Public Library to use the Tangerine and Baron Hugo Gazebo on Thursday, August 15th, 2024, from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM for an end-of-summer reading event with Bryson Lang juggling and magic show.
I'll second.
Is he juggling books?
I am not sure.
If it's a reading event and a magic show?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 11?
Can we just go to 11?
11, yeah.
Okay, great. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the payment in lieu of taxes from Milton Academy for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $225,000. I never do this right. $225,000.
A second.
Second by Mr. Zoll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 12, discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, go, go.
We're just flying.
You're being me.
I am. I'm in your seat.
Yeah. I might swap it back.
We actually did switch seats. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation from the East Congregational Church in the amount of $600 to the Milton Coalition.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a one-day liquor license to the Forbes House Museum located at 215 Adams Street, Barn Fest 2024, for Thursday, August 15th, 2024, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Now, somebody else.
Mr. Milano. We have the, no one else. What did I miss?
Meeting minutes.
All right, hold on. Wait a minute. How come that's not on my agenda? Oh, I had to flip pages.
There's no changes to them, right?
No, but I have to recuse, I'm recused on, when was I out of state? I was away for one of them. So, if someone wants to make a motion, go ahead. Yeah, the joint one, but I was away.
What one was on?
Someone wanna make a motion?
Lynn, which one was that?
The one that we did together with.
Joint with the planning board.
No, no, about what?
Oh, I was away for that, too.
What?
Yeah, it says Cheerwalt and Ms. Bradley Roddick. So, this would be, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the joint meeting of the Select Board of Planning Board meeting minutes for June 20th, 2024.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
You know, we abstained.
Abstained.
I'm abstaining.
So two abstentions.
You abstained. Did we do this one?
Did you get that one?
For the Forbes House?
We did.
All right, we did that, okay.
Yep.
So then we have the other meeting minutes, right?
Yep. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from June eleventh, 2024, and June twenty-fifth, 2024, and July fifteenth, 2024.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can taste the finish line.
Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just been, I'm out of the office this week, so I don't have a ton of updates. But if you haven't been to town hall and seen the landscaping going in around the fire headquarters, the paving is done, striping is scheduled for Friday. Landscaping is going in now, so the whole center area looks much less like a construction site and much more like a welcoming part of Milton. So we're happy to have that. There is a new pathway from Council on Aging area over to, to town hall with some nice lighting that goes through, I wouldn't say the woods, I guess, through the, the park area adjacent to town hall. It looks great. So the project's wrapping up and should be done shortly. And the new meeting room in the first floor of the old fire headquarters should be opening before fall is what we expect. So nice to see this project coming to completion. And I'll close there, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milano, just a quick question on the striping. I know there was some concern on the spaces and so that they wouldn't be as narrow. Did they look at that? Because I know there was some concern with that from different people.
Yes, they can, we can restripe with the same number of spaces or we can restripe six inches wider and lose three spaces. So right now, we're keeping it the same to hold on to the spaces. And that's the plan for Friday. Yeah, so it's just, with parking is tight, we understand that. The one thing, I think, the two factors I think that also went into it was a lot of the contracting and parking there, they're parking heavier equipment, bigger trucks.